Appeals to Order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's a number of things that I usually cover before we get underway, and they're usually printed out for me on a sheet that I can look down to occasionally. But I don't have the sheet with me tonight, so I'll see if I can do it from memory after four or five years. The fire exit is to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified. Please move calmly in an orderly direction. Oh, thank you. To the exits, use the stairs, not the elevators. Our meetings are recorded by our Secretary, Michelle, who's not with us this evening, so Donna will be taking minutes. It's for the purpose of a record, not as a transcript. When you come to the microphone, please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on our agenda, which tonight is real easy to do. We only have one case. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address. Then I'll -- they'll raise their right hands. I'll place them under oath, and then they will have the opportunity to present their case. While they're presenting their case, members of the board have the opportunity to ask them any questions that they wish to ask. Once the case has been concluded and all the questions from the board have been asked and answered, then we'll open it up to input from the public. First, we'll hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, and then we'll speak from -- hear from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. After the public import portion of the hearing has been concluded, the applicant will have the chance, or their representative, to address any issues or concerns that were raised during the public input portion of the hearing. Once that's concluded, then I will close the case. And in this case, we'll then -- normally, we take a brief adjournment at the end of hearing all the cases. Since we only have one case on our docket tonight, I'm going to skip the break. So when the applicant is done, then we will deliberate, reach a decision, and that will be the conclusion of the meeting. So during the deliberation portion, no further input is allowed. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave, you certainly may do so, and you can find out the results by either watching it on TV or calling into the town tomorrow, and the building and zoning department will be able to tell you what happened with the case. So we will call our only docket item.
Okay. March 5, 2012 meeting upon the matter of request by Karen and John Wagner for special use permit to harbor four ducks and a duck house in Fens Pandaria pursuant to Section 235-70 of Town of Arundicoid Code on premises 260 Daly Boulevard in Nire One Residential District.
My name is Karen Wagner, and I -- we used to raise ducks when we lived in Asia for a few years, and we had four or five ducks, and we raised them for eggs.
Hold on. You're Karen Wagner. You live at?
260 Daly Boulevard.
All right. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Now we'll listen to your presentation.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
And so we had them as pets, but also for the egg production. The eggs are really, really good in baking. And so what I'm proposing is to have four ducks in our backyard and raise them for eggs. I am specifically picking a breed that's the quietest of the domesticated ducks. There is one duck that's mute, but it can be aggressive sometimes, so I didn't want that one. It's a Cuyuga duck. It's native to the area, but it's been domesticated, and actually, it's -- I can't get the chicks locally. They would come from the western United States, and they would come as chicks. I did check with all my neighbors, and at first, in the letter that I wrote to the board, I just checked orally, and two of my neighbors were actually enthusiastic. They'd had experience with having ducks in their backyard, or with -- or growing up with ducks, or having next-door neighbors who had ducks. And yesterday, I went around, and I got signatures from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of my most immediate neighbors, and none of them have a problem. And I got a letter also from one neighbor, too, saying that they're fine with that.
If you can pass those down, or then we can read them into the record.
I also have some pictures of my backyard. This is the back of the garage, and from the floor -- from the plans that you have, the duck house would be coming off here. We're proposing one foot more than what was on the plan. I think it's five by three instead of four by three now. And there would be a two-foot-high fence, and the fencing material that I am proposing to use. Oh, first, the duck house would be made out of this kind of plyboard, and we might paint it, so it's not just regular plyboard, but it has -- it would look nicer. And then the fencing would be green, two-feet-high galvanized chicken wire is one idea. There's some pictures of what it looked like. They only sell it by rolls in Home Depot, so I couldn't bring in a sample. So I'll pass this around, too. This is a detailed drawing of what the house might look like. And the upper part of the house would be a lattice. I think attached to my application, I had a couple of examples from books, photocopies from a book, and from one or two internet sites saying that this duck was ideal for suburbs because it is quiet, it doesn't fly. I found two additional websites where they say these ducks exemplify a quiet, calm, docile temperament, and they do not fly. Cuyuga ducks tend to stay close to home, making them an excellent choice for a home flock or as yard pets. And then another website that said Cuyugas are docile, friendly, and quiet. And I did tell my neighbors, I was very honest when I circulated that around, that they will quack when I let them out in the morning, they will quack when you put them in. They just do a quack, quack, quack. It's kind of like they're like kind of gentle. I won't do my quack imitation again. And then if something startles them, if something's chasing them, then they will also quack. But they'll be in a fenced area. And at night, they will be in a closed door. And my husband says he can make it that the door will automatically close, too, so -- because they do like to go in when the sun's setting, so in case if we're out at one of our kids' games or something, the door can close automatically on them. So I think that's about all the information I have to share right now.
All right. And just for the record, we have a letter from Alphonse and Elizabeth Van Acker, who live at 254 Daly Boulevard. And we have a sheet that's signed, "Neighbors," indicating that it's fine with them if Karen Wagner has four ducks in the backyard at 260 Daly Boulevard, and that's signed by Dan Post, 268 Daly, Emily Rousey at 280 Daly, Jean Triest at 217 Seville, who's happy to see the ducks in the neighborhood, John and Lois Hillard, 229 Seville, Judith Williamson, 235 Seville, Elizabeth Scott, 223 Seville, and Mike Wojcik at 274 Daly Boulevard.
Excuse me. Are the four ducks you're having mixed, male, female?
They would all be female.
All female, so you're not telling them that maybe they're not?
No, I don't want -- and they don't -- ducks in general don't sit on their eggs very well, and this breed especially doesn't. So -- and I'm not interested in having more. And I propose the number four because they are a flock animal. We did once, when we were in Asia, also have one goat, and that was a very cruel, terrible thing to do because they're a flock animal, too. So I think three would be an absolute minimum number for them to kind of feel kind of safe or, you know, something close to what they're used to. And I thought four was a good number for the egg production. They're not a high-producing egg. They don't produce a lot of eggs.
What is the life -- average lifespan of a Cuyuga duck?
Five, six years, and they produce eggs for one to three years. Their main -- no, sorry. Their main production is one to three, and they can produce up to five years. It definitely dwindles off.
And when they're done producing eggs, then what?
Then they're pets.
And they're pets?
Uh-huh. We're mostly vegetarian in our house, so.
Okay.
As far as the smell or odor, how does that come into effect? Are they very smelly, or?
I don't remember them at all being an issue, and we had a relatively small yard when we lived in Asia, too, and I don't remember that being an issue. We do have a compost bin, a closed -- one of those that you buy, and we layer, you know, grass and leaves, and I will have straws there bedding, and we're very responsible pet owners, so I could put the straw with the fecal matter into the compost area, too. And that should -- I think that would minimize any flies or things like that. And then in terms of water, ducks don't need water, but they do like it a lot, so especially in the warmer months. Just I was thinking of getting a wash basin about that big and just have a little ramp that they can go in.
I think I may have missed a little something you said. I wasn't sure. My question has to do with fencing, and I just saw a picture of chickens with chicken wire around. Was that to show anything?
That was from the internet, so that was the only example I could find of a good picture of what the fencing would be like.
Okay. That's what I missed. I was reading all this other stuff.
Okay.
So you do plan on chicken wire?
Duck wire.
Duck wire?
Duck wire.
And I'm open to suggestions, too, if you have something. I thought that would be the most practical, and, you know, because of the green and it's only two feet high, I thought it would have the most aesthetic, you know, look the least out of place.
And the neighbors all are aware of all this, right?
I'm sorry?
Your neighbors are all?
They are, yeah. Yeah, I was. I told them, and if -- I'll pass these pictures of my backyard. Actually, there's -- we have grapevines that grow almost from the floor to the -- quite high in the back, so the neighbors wouldn't see them very much in the back. And on the front, we have pretty dense shrubbery, too, along that fence line. And the ducks, why we chose that place for the houses -- for their houses, we have two apple trees, so their run will be under the apple trees, and so they really won't be very visible, I don't think. And we wanted them under the apple trees because we have a -- like a -- there's a pest that's getting the apples, and I'm hoping the ducks will take care of that. They're supposed to be very good foragers. So I'll pass these pictures around, and that's our compost container there, too.
When you order ducks, what type of specifications go into the order? Kind of curious about that. I didn't know how this is done.
You order -- I didn't know either, so I didn't know that you could order -- that they would, through the regular mail, two-day mail, they send -- they send them as soon as they're hatched because they still have the yoke, and they don't need food or water for two or three days. And so they're shipped, and you should get them by the time they're two days old. And then I guess they imprint -- they will imprint on me because I'll be the first thing that -- living thing that they'll see, which I guess can be kind of annoying if you want to do yard work or something because they try and follow you.
Is that when you -- can you specify color and gender and all that?
No, I can't specify gender, yeah. On all the websites, you can specify if you want mixed, or if you want just females, or there's another, like, livestock term they use. But I just want the females, and you do specify that, and that's guaranteed. And then you -- I can't specify color. The Cuyuga duck's a black duck with kind of a green iridescent color to it along the neck.
You mentioned the fence is two foot. They're not able to get over that?
They don't fly. Uh-uh. Some ducks do, and you can clip their wings, but this duck doesn't fly.
The question I had was the pen that they're staying in the structure. I couldn't quite understand the drawing, but just how high is it going to be behind the garage?
It'll be -- it's going to be on -- sorry, it's going to be on cinder blocks, so about that high off the ground. And that's -- and so we can move it, so if it needs to air out underneath or something. And then it'll be four feet high on where the door is for the ducks to get in, and then the roof will slope, and the back end will be, I think, two feet high.
So with, say, a foot on the cinder blocks and four feet of structure, it's about five feet high?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So this is a movable building, a type of?
It will be, yeah. I was like thinking if the wind is going to be really strong one night, we know it's going to be coming in, and it's going to be a north wind, I could just rotate it towards the house. I don't know. It just gives flexibility, since this will be our first time doing it.
Do we know, Donna, if a permit is needed for that little structure that's movable, or?
Well, we'll make -- we'll give them a permit, but it won't be a building permit because it's under 144 square feet, so.
Yeah.
But we will make sure it's got the setbacks, yeah.
The house that's depicted in the pictures, the White House next door to you, is that the house of the enactors that have the dog?
It is.
Now, have they -- they haven't done anything about a privacy fence for their dog yet?
No, but I -- they're considering it.
All right. So is it possible for you to put some kind of material or something up with the duck wire so that the dog wouldn't see the ducks from their side?
I think one thing that'll be kind of ideal about the timing of the ducks is if I order them, say, in the next two weeks, then it takes another three weeks, and then it's actually not nine weeks until they can go out and be on their own in the house because they have to stay in a heated box until they're older. And by then, those shrubs should grow in, and you can't see from where the duck run is, you can't see -- I can't see their dog. We have a dog also, and our dogs can't see each other. That's how dense the shrubbery is. And then hopefully, by then, he'll be used to the sound, so in the winter, when the leaves fall, it -- no, it won't be an issue. And if it is, you know, we would take care, you know, between the two of us, we would take care of it. We're on very good terms with all our neighbors.
So the eggs are specifically for your own use, then?
They are. I'll share them. There'll be times when there'll be too many.
You have no intention of selling them?
Oh, no, no.
Or coming to our farmer's market or?
Not at all. I have no business. I don't know what the word is. I'm not very good at business stuff, so I don't.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here -- oh, step right up. Give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Russo. I live at 287 Daly Boulevard. And speaking in favor of their application, John and Karen Wagner have been neighbors and also professional colleagues of mine. I know that if they are requesting a permit to raise ducks, that they will do it with the utmost integrity, with respect for neighbors, and with respect for any environmental concerns that may be raised. They're very good at covering all the bases and very knowledgeable about what goes on. So based on that, I would like to speak in favor of their project.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up, sir.
My name is Dan Post. I live at 268 Daly, and they're immediate neighbor to the east. And since I moved in a couple of years ago, they've been great neighbors. We've never had a problem with their dog. Maddie's a great, great dog, and I can't speak highly enough of them as neighbors. And as far as them having a small flock of ducks, I don't have any problem with that. I've had experience with ducks before, and I don't believe these ducks are going to be a nuisance outside their yard.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Come right up.
Carol Anne Bourgeois, 241 Seville Drive. The problem I have is there's a lot of dogs in the neighborhood, and I have a half-beef and half-Boston terrier. I mean, she goes nuts at squirrels and birds. She's going to hear ducks. I, you know, if I wanted to live in a duck area, I'd live down on the bay or the lake.
Took me a minute to figure out what you were referring to. Okay.
So I just -- I don't think ducks belong on Daly Boulevard.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Does your house border their property at all, behind it?
I'm at 241. They're at, what, 260 or something?
260. So you're not directly behind it, or?
Not directly. They're here, and I'm down maybe three houses, I think.
Okay.
You're on Daly or Seville?
Seville. My backyard would be adjacent to Daly Boulevard's backyards.
Okay. Does the numbering on Seville match the numbering on Daly by any chance?
I don't believe so.
That would be too much to ask.
So your objection basically is the dog reacting to the ducks?
Not only mine, on my -- on Seville, there's -- out of six houses, there's at least five directly near me with dogs. So I'm, you know, I'm not the only one with dogs.
And your fear is that the ducks will set all these dogs off every time they?
The quacking.
Make some quacking and that type of thing?
Yes.
Do the dogs set each other off now?
You hear dogs occasionally, but not overly.
I mean, I know my neighbor's dog comes out in the morning, and they bark, and then my dogs go out, and they get reacquainted, and then they quiet down.
Yeah.
So, I mean?
Same basic premise.
About what goes on? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Ms. Wagner, do you wish to add anything? All right. Then the case will be closed. Seeing we have nothing else on our agenda for tonight, we will -- this is a Type II action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I had a thought with regard to the proof or the testimony. Maybe if I could make an observation, and it might assist the board a little bit. You know, with -- I know you all know that with regard to a special use permit, you're not being held to the same standard that you would be held if it was a use variance, somewhat more relaxed. But I think what's important is you consider whether or not to grant it, is that what you're essentially doing is you're protecting the neighborhood property against the obvious noise, congestion, odor, things of that nature, and you are entitled to set conditions to protect the neighborhood with regard to those components. And one additional component that you might want to consider in light of the last person that spoke is that you could, as a condition, ask that the matter be subject to staff review after a period of time. I think you've done that in your other paltry matters that you've considered.
I think we have, as a matter of fact.
And that might -- that might ease some of the concern with regard to the presence of the ducks, and if there were a problem as a condition, it could be referred back to the board for reconsideration.
A special use permit can also be limited in time?
Correct.
Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this matter?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I can't keep my quack shut very long anyway.
He was dying to say that.
I guess I would make a motion if we approve the application for the raising of the ducks on 260 Daly Boulevard with conditions. And I think that was a very good point, Mr. O'Reilly, and I appreciate your advice on that because we all are concerned about the neighborhood. We all are concerned about noise, anything that makes the quality of life on a street or an area the least bit threatened. We're very concerned about that. And I think that having a review, I guess that was the best way to call it, or by the town, what would it be, the building department or the?
Planner.
Planners.
Yeah. It could be animal control with the -- because animal control would probably get a lot of the complaints. We could work with the animal control.
Okay, let's work with animal control to assess the situation after one year, and if it's -- they're getting complaints about this, that then it would be time to review, re-review this whole application at this board.
Could I suggest that one year might even seem to be going out a little too far. Six months would put you into the end of August, and it gets you into the summer. I'm just thinking.
Okay, yeah. I was just thinking that they have to be ordered and raised and all that kind of thing, but I think by six -- six months, that should tell. They'll probably be fully grown and egg-producing by that time?
I forget when they start producing. I think it's about four months.
Okay, so let's say six months. Give it a little chance there instead of one year to be reviewed.
All right. So I have the town officials, animal control, planner to review the situation in terms of neighbor complaints after six months. Is that the condition?
Yes, sir.
And do we -- do you wish to limit the permit to a time period so that we would then be reviewing it to come back for review?
I would. I would, but I'm not sure what that limit should be.
Well, you'd mention a year.
Or really, would a year be appropriate?
I think that makes sense. And, you know, it could be -- I mean, you don't have to have a full-blown hearing. It could just be referred to you for a cursory review at the end of the year.
Okay. One year.
The other question is, and it's in the -- it's in the motion, what -- or the application, is four ducks, not to exceed four ducks. Or, you know, if we want to add a duck, not to exceed five ducks, just in case, but.
Well, if the application's for four, we could just stand at four.
If we wanted to.
Can we also limit it to the type of duck, to the Cuyuga duck?
I think that was -- that was part of the specific application, and that duck was chosen because of its characteristics. So I don't think that's appropriate to limit it to the Cuyuga duck.
Cuyuga duck. Any other conditions to be put on?
Just curious as to after the six months, would this be an annual review, or? I mean, the ducks might be very quiet for six months, and then all of a sudden, they become larger, and I don't know whether the -- might not be any complaints.
Six months is a staff review. It's going to come back before this board for a review at the end of a year. Then I think you could deal with that.
Okay, so that there's no complaints after six months?
Still going to come back here at the end of a year.
Back here after a year, and then if we felt that it was things were going all right, we could make it for longer than a year. We felt that things weren't going all right, then we wouldn't have to extend it.
And I'd like to second that motion.
All right. Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say that in my deliberations in my head before we got to the meeting, I really was not in favor of having ducks in Arundicoid. Based on very, very limited knowledge of ducks and what that would mean. And I know we've dealt with chickens before. Actually, we've dealt with quite a few different things, but this is a new one. And I was -- I think I was kind of on the same page as the person that spoke in opposition that this is not a place for ducks in the town of Arundicoid. However, after getting this information tonight, you did a very good job in convincing me that this could work and that by -- by and large, the neighborhood would not be affected by it. I've literally put conditions on it because if it is, we want some recourse. That's why I think, in my opinion, you know, we should go ahead and give it a whirl, give it a try. Give it a quack.
Anyone else wish to -- any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Six votes in favor, and we have one member absent, none opposed. And that, I believe, concludes our docket.
If we make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
You didn't say opposed. You didn't say opposed.